Good evening. Welcome to the February 10th, 2020 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. I will call this meeting to order and ask you to stand and join me on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. It's a pretty good crowd. It's such a dreary night out there, cold and sleepy. For those of you who may be here to speak on any items, please remember that you do need to fill out a request to speak if you're here to speak. If you haven't filled out a request to speak, there are forms out in the lobby that you can bring up here at Patty. If you're not here to speak, we're happy to have you here anyway. We're going to start tonight with a proclamation recognizing the 100-year anniversary of the League of Women Voters. We have a couple of representatives. Velda?
Yes.
I'll go ahead. Actually, yes, I see you've got several members here. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words, we appreciate that. Whereas, the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experiment by the foremothers of the suffragist movement at the National American Women Suffrage Association. And whereas their goal was to help the 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment understand and carry out their new responsibility to voters. And whereas, with the success of this effort and the tireless efforts over the last 100 years to strengthen and uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan grassroots organization. And whereas, the League has consistently been noted for its nonpartisan election information, including sponsorship of candidate forums and information on state and local ballot issues, as well as its commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters. And whereas, the League champions government systems that are open, transparent, inclusive, and equitable. And whereas, the Stillwater League was organized in 1947 and has continued to be involved in community, state, and national concerns through study, public forums, and giving information to our citizens. And whereas, the League believes that active and engaged citizens irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation are the hallmark of democracy. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, the mayor of the city of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim February 14th, 2020 as League of Women Voters Day in Stillwater.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hodean is yours.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate all the support that you give us. We're only as good as the people who join us and lead us, and we expect to continue for another 100 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll bring this to you.
Yes, I have several ladies here.
Come to?
Sure.
We shouldn't be shy. There we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all the work.
Remember, you can still vote tomorrow.
And the League hosted a candidate forum for this city council election just this week, so we certainly appreciate that. Thank you all for being here. Okay, that takes us to item four on the consent document. We have special meeting minutes from our study session on January 27th, and we have a number of documents authorizing easements and right-of-way acquisitions for our Perkins Road project that is coming up here sometime soon, hopefully. So, councilors, any questions, comments, or motions concerning the consent document?
Motion to approve the consent document.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the consent document is approved. Takes us down to public hearings. Item seven, 7A, receive public comment regarding a request to close 330 feet of a platte 10-foot utility easement located in Block 4 of the Watson Heights addition on property addressed as 821 North Main Street. This is CC-20-25. Mr. Dorvind, do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Sir, Mr. Gross.
Yes. Good evening, mayor and councilors. My name is Lance Gross, and I'm with the Community Development Department. The first case before you tonight is for an easement closing. You don't usually see these very often because what the process is for this one, the staff basically creates the request, and it comes directly to you. The map right here indicates the location. This subject site may look familiar because we've had a rezoning request for this recently and also a preliminary plat that came before planning commission just a few months ago. But basically, what the applicant is trying to do is clean up all the legal items for the property so that they can proceed with the final plat. And this is the location of an existing sanitary sewer which will be removed, and they wish to close this. This is an aerial view looking to the north. You can see Malkaroy is at the bottom, North Lewis is over here, and North Main Street is right here. The intersection here is where basically Main Street turns into Boomer Road. The Elks Lodge is over here, and this is the location of the utility easement. Be happy to try to answer any questions.
Counselors, any questions for Lance at this point? Do we have representative from the owner? Kelly?
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering located at 923 South Lowry here representing the owner tonight. As Lance mentioned, this is a previously platted area. We are going to be replating the lots so that adjusts where easements are located. We did send this to all city and non-city-owned utilities, and no utility companies have come back with any issues. Do you have any questions?
Counselor?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. At this point, I will open the public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak on the public hearing, so I will close the public hearing. And Lance, is there a... There's a staff recommendation on this item, right?
Yes, that is correct. Staff recommends closing, approval of the closing request.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, are there questions or discussion, or is there a motion?
Motion to accept staff recommendations to close 330 feet of easement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. That takes us to 7B, receive public comment regarding a request for review and approval of a specific use permit to allow for a 120-foot tall monopole cell tower at 1680 East 6th Avenue, which is the 911 address, or 1620 East 6th Avenue, which is the city address. And it's really odd that those aren't the same. But this is CC-20-26. Mr. Dorvind, do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
Yes. The specific use permit before you tonight is located in a CG zoning, and a monopole cell tower requires an SUP. This is the location. The hatch pattern indicates it's adjacent to the new lock supply building that's being constructed and across the street from Freddie Paul's. This is the subject site. The yellow boundary basically outlines the actual legal description, but the actual location of the cell tower will be back here in this smaller footprint. 6th Avenue is down here. Stollard is over here on the west, and South Payne Street is over on the right. This is a street view looking to the north, northwest, basically. But you can see the tower location will actually be back behind the buildings on the site. And Troy Williams, I believe, is here, and he's the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Mayor, council, my name is Troy Williams. I'm with CRB and Branch Communications, representing AT&amp;T on this project. We've been working on trying to fix some issues with coverage in Stillwater with 5G rolling out. This proposed tower is 120 feet, like you said. The lease area in that little square was a 55 by 55 square with the tower in the middle. The site will be fenced with a privacy fence per code. We're going to use the existing entrance off 6th Street, coming in through the development that's already there. It's already paved. We're actually going through the gate to the back storage lot and then putting in another gate back there to go straight into the site. It meets the requirements of the code as far as setbacks and everything else from property lines and residential. This is a full-blown cell site. It's cellular, data broadband, Wi-Fi with FirstNet, which is the first responders' dedicated bandwidth for first responders. So it's got some benefits, 911 benefits, as well as first responder benefits. This will enhance in-building coverage for this area. Right now, you have outdoor coverage, but you have very limited in-building coverage and it tied into the existing sites that actually offload two sites. One's out by the FFA building, kind of, and the closest one in town is their headquarters, which is right across Main Street over here. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have coverage maps if you... I think they were in the package that showed the coverage. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to give it to you.
There were probably five of the planning commission.
Oh, yes, planning, yes.
All right, this is a... You guys do propagation maps to show?
That's correct.
Coverage and why this is a needed coverage. A hole in the coverage, currently?
Yes, sir. It's pretty much red all through that area, and we want green. So does everybody else. Yes, sir.
Counselors, any further questions for Mr. Williams?
No.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much for your time.
I will open and close this public hearing. No one signed up to speak. Mr. Gross, was there a planning commission recommendation?
Yes. Excuse me. The planning commission made a recommendation by a vote of four to zero to approve the application.
Counselors, any further questions, comments, or motions on this item?
Motion to accept the planning commission recommendation to approve the SUP.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this SUP. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the specific use permit is approved. That takes us to item 7C, receive public comment regarding a proposed text amendment to check... A proposed text amendment amending Chapter 23, Land Development Code, Article 13, Overlay Districts, Division 3, Westwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay Districts to amend Section 23-275.13, Off-Street Parking, CC-20-28. Mr. Dorvind, do we have good notice on this item?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gross?
Yes. Let's see. Text amendments don't come before you very often, but this one came to us because a citizen within the neighborhood was in the process of trying to reconstruct his driveway. And based the way the ordinance reads, he was unable to do that. The driveway was in poor condition, and he was really in need of making some upgrades. So based upon the ordinance, it was determined that it needed to be revised so that we could, you know, work with him, but also work with anybody else who came into the same situation. And what was, as was indicated, the Westwood Neighborhood on this map is indicated by the blue boundary. And basically, you know, why do we need a text amendment? Well, it's in order to clarify and make sure that other individuals that run into this situation are able to make improvements to their property. And how did we get to this point? Well, members of the Westwood Neighborhood came to us, and they drafted an ordinance for us to review. So we reviewed that over a few months, came back, and went back and forth with some comments and suggestions, and we came up with what's in your packet. And then what does this basically do, the revision? The ordinance revision will clarify the front yard parking area. We basically have a definition and a graphic to show that, and it will allow the homeowners to maintain their driveway and make minor changes to the pavement. And this, basically what this comes down to is typical, ordinary maintenance and repair. And this is one of the graphics that's included within the ordinance revision. It indicates the location of the house. One of the confusing part was the fact that, you know, what's described as the front yard. Now, this is basically the front yard, anywhere from the front of the house to the right-of-way This blue area is the front yard area, and this is one of the calculations that use this area to actually make the calculation as to the percentage of what can be covered. And one of the elements that was originally within the document was this table. And a lot of people that would go through this process would look at this, and they'd see this impervious coverage area. They'd look at this one over here. And when you put the pencil to it, it basically, they conflicted. So we wanted to make sure that people weren't confused when they went through the ordinance, and they knew exactly what they needed to do whenever they submitted an application. Any questions?
Counselors?
No explanation.
Oh, thank you.
I'm a little confused still. So the change, instead of using that front yard area calculation, is going to use that full front yard calculation?
Actually, it'll use just the front yard area calculation. Yeah, just that.
So it's the other way around?
Correct.
Okay. So, I mean, the issue being, when he tried, when the issue that brought this up, when they tried to rebuild, it was going to fall over the allowed impervious area on this yard?
That is correct.
Because of these conflicting calculations?
That is correct.
Okay. Counselors, any further questions for Lance? So this was on our agenda a while back, and it went back to the neighborhood for further discussion at that point. We feel good that the neighborhood, that they understand this, and they're on board with this revision?
Yes. We sent it to the neighborhood president, and they sent it around to the board members. And in turn, they sent it to a local engineer, and we got input from that individual as well, so.
Okay. I guess at this point, I will open and close the public hearing. I don't know if anybody signed up to speak on this item. And is there a planning commission recommendation on this one, Lance?
Yes, the planning commission made a recommendation by a vote of four to zero to approve it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselors, further questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion to accept the planning commission recommendation and approve the Land Development Code text amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that text amendment is approved. That takes us down to item eight, general orders. 8A, presentation from OSU student Riley Davidson on Active Design.
Hello. My name is Riley Davidson, and I'm a senior interior design student at Oklahoma State. I spent the last semester with Dr. Jay Otis studying Stillwater and how active design can be integrated into the city. So I want to ask you guys, how active are you in your daily lives? The girl in the middle is my roommate, Jamie, and she runs a marathon a year and leads an active lifestyle. Now I want to ask you, how active are the people of Stillwater? Do they make healthy choices? Are they as active as Jamie is? Oklahoma ranks third worst in obesity, with 37% of adults being obese. Even within Oklahoma, Stillwater is among the higher end of that spectrum. If we follow this problem back to childhood, obesity has doubled in ages six to 11 in the last 30 years. And to bring the issue full circle, obese children are more likely to become obese adults. As you can see, there is an active need for active design in Stillwater. So active design is an evidence-based approach to development that identifies urban planning and architecture solutions to support healthy communities. These are the principles of active design based on awareness, accessibility, and amenities, and there's 10 of them. I'll go through them very briefly. Principles of active design include activities for all, a walkable community, connected routes of biking and walking, co-location of facilities, networking of open spaces, high-quality spaces in streets, appropriate infrastructure, active buildings, management and evaluation, and activity promotion. So my proposal is to start with the parks. How do parks help? Well, they encourage dynamic play with children. Anyone who goes to a park is going to actively play there. It is exposure to nature, which can lower blood pressure, reduce stress, and reduce anxiety. And it's a family activity. When kids go to the park, families go along with them. For this study, we looked at a website called tpl.org, and this was a website that basically shows you all the parks in the community. There were 16 parks in Stillwater, according to this, and 23,000 people in Stillwater within a 10-minute walk of a park. It shows you parks from the big park like Boomer Lake Park all the way to the smallest park of Tower. After looking at the 16 parks in Stillwater through site visits and photos, we determined some common issues that are hindering active design. There's a lack of accessibility due to insufficient transportation to and from parks, and there's not enough parks in places where that matter the most. On the website, it actually points out several areas where parks are needed, such as east of Perkins Road. Also, in several parks, the poor equipment or lack of maintenance as an Arrowhead Park prevents people from using it as often as they would like to be using it. There are issues with safety, whether from location, lighting, poor upkeep, or general perceived feeling of unsafety. And there's poor signage that doesn't promote active design or park usage. So my proposal is to focus on one park at a time. Tower Park, although it's really small, and you would think Boomer would need the most work, Tower Park actually services twice the amount of people as Boomer Park as far as being able to walk to the park in 10 minutes. So it services 4,800 people. That's only .7 acres big. So my proposed improvements are to increase the signage. There is a really small sign right now that says this is Tower Park, doesn't tell you what you can do there, how, you know, doesn't tell you how big it is, nothing about the park. So I propose new signage that promotes active design and physical activity. Lighting would be very helpful in this space to, people use it at night, and just help the perceived safety. Equipment such as hammocking stations and group seating would be helpful because right now there's one big table out there, I think, and that's it. And then community involvement would help with involving the community and having events there that show how the park can be utilized. This is a case study we researched based on a Houston neighborhood. They took 600 feet of sidewalk and used a $2,000 budget to transform the community. They created spaces for active play, stimulating the brain, and then just little tidbits about the park and the neighborhood in general. So it was a very low budget, but it had a really high impact on the community itself. These are examples of signage we want to include in the parks, something that would show you what you can do, where the amenities are, and activities that can be done there. So why should the city care? So this will promote overall wellness and health within the community. It'll reduce costs with healthcare for the city, and it'll attract investors, students, and members to join this community as well. So the next steps, there's two sophomore students taking on the product as I graduate. They'll be connecting walkability questionnaires, park usage, park improvements. They'll be doing safety studies about all the parks, seeing how often parks are being used in the neighborhoods, and engaging the community with a community-wide movement to improve the parks and city health. So 47% of people in Stillwater live within a 10-minute walk of a park, but do they use those parks? Shouldn't we all be more like Jamie and be more active in our everyday lives? Because of this project I've been working on for a semester, a group of myself and four other seniors have started a capstone on it to promote sustainability in the parks. We take in the area behind the Stillwater High School, that's the running track for Boomer Lake, and we are proposing ideas to make it better and to address the needs of the community. The high schoolers use that, business owners use that, and people who want to run the trail use it as well, and we can fix it up and make it a lot better. That's all I have for you, but my email is up there, as well as Dr. Jay Otis's email. I'd love to answer any questions you have for me.
Excellent. Thank you, Riley. Counselors, do you have questions for Riley?
I have a comment. I do happen to live near the Boomer Lake Trail behind the Simran Plaza, and it's really exciting to hear the enthusiasm and the creativity of the students involved in the program. I love the connection with OSU students. They not only run a lot, but they inspire us to do all kinds of new things. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the information and the focus that you've put into this project. We've had a project here in Stillwater that's been really close to my heart, the playground at Strickland Park, the inclusive playground that we're building there. It certainly sparked an interest in me to focus on other areas, what we can do to improve, to be more inclusive and more accessible to our community and highlight these areas. We do have quite a bit of park land. I think just finding opportunities for programming and ways to enhance it, I love the emphasis that you've given us to look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the gentle reminder that it doesn't necessarily cost a ton of money to do some simple things that can have a big impact on our community. So maybe starting small with the smallest park might be a way to kind of start the domino effect.
Yeah.
I hope you're remiss if I didn't mention the fact that I appreciate you throwing in the cardiovascular benefits of both your children as a stroke doctor. In fact, you know, that's one of the platforms that I've been speaking about is the fact that our, the lack of use of our multimodal transportation is, one, because we don't have enough, but, two, because we have a cultural problem. And it's okay to walk from your house to the corner store, you know, a quarter mile away. You don't have to get in the automobile every time. Same is true for kids. Go to the park, play, run. Don't be obese as a child. Don't be obese as an adult. So I appreciate the fact that you took that angle in the opening of your presentation. I think that's something that rings home with a lot of people. Good job, Riley.
Thank you.
Not to be outdone by the stroke doctor, but the kind of buzzy new mental health term is awareness rehabilitation therapy. And that means, translated to our language, it means go outside. So go to a park outside and have your awareness rehabilitated.
Riley, is this, so this is part of a class?
Yes. It's independent study.
An independent study class? Okay, so then, and this is continuing? You said you've got sophomores that are going to come and continue this research. I think it's great. I'm going to give you a couple of suggestions of additional information. One, campus. And a lot of campus is a park in a lot of ways, right? And that doesn't show up in the city statistics of parks, but I think, you know, a lot of those students that live within 10 minutes of Tower Park also live within 10 minutes of campus and spend a lot of, you know, use a lot of that green space as well. So, you know, I want us, as a city, to be sure that we're considering campus as part of this as well, because they've done a fantastic job in a lot of ways with maintaining some of that, some of that land. And, you know, it's open to the public, and, in fact, my kids and I, we took the dog out to campus for a walk, right? And that's kind of where we say, let's go down there and walk around campus. So I think that's a good addition to where people, where places do this kind of activity. I'd also love to see Lake McMurtry included in some of your discussions, and that's hard to get to. It's not a 10-minute walk from anybody.
Yeah.
But it is another place where they've been acting. But it is another place where they've been active. They're trying to bring more. They've talked a lot about, I can't remember what they call it, prescriptions for outdoor, you know, the idea of mental health and physical health by getting outside and using the trails, that sort of thing. And we'd love to try to figure out ways we can help get people out there from a transportation perspective. So I think this is all really important information. I think it's an important conversation for a community to be having on how we can better utilize the space that we have and get people more active. So I'm looking forward to seeing that continued work and certainly appreciate all the work that you've done on this so far.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here. I think it's fantastic that we have a whole community of students in Stillwater that do this kind of work for us, that can kind of help us learn more about our own community and research these sorts of things that we don't certainly have time to do ourselves. And staff is focused on other things as well. So I think it's fantastic, the professors that help sponsor these programs and the students that commit their time to them. It's a huge benefit to our community. So, thank you, guys. Okay. We are now at 8B, approved final plat for Silverton Estates on property addressed to 1600 East 16th Avenue, CC-20-24. Mr. Gross?
Yes. Let's see, the final application before you tonight is a final plat. And the intent of a final plat is to dedicate the right-of-way for streets and also the easements for utilities. Silverton Estates is located, let's see, it's west of Payne and south of 12th. And this is a bird's eye view looking to the north. You can see 17th at the bottom. Ransom Drive is over here on the left-hand side. And also, I'm sorry, South Payne is over here. This is a view looking to the northwest. And this is where Payne terminates, and this is where the subdivision basically will begin. And this is from, I'm sorry, from Ransom, looking straight to the east. And this is the private drive, which will be the emergency entrance to the neighborhood. And this is a graphic that shows the right-of-way in blue for streets and the utility easements in green. And Kelly Harris is the applicant's representative, and she'll be coming up to talk about her project.
Good evening. Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry. Here representing the owner tonight. As Lance went over earlier, this is the final plat before you tonight. It's been fully reviewed by staff, and all comments have been addressed, both in the improvement plans and the final plat that you see. Just as a quick overview, this is fully within the density allowed in the RSS zoning classification. We're at 5.1 acres, where in RSS you're allowed to have up to eight units per acre. And that 5.1 is well within the density allowed within the comprehensive plan. The comp plan shows this area as low-density residential with a mix of density up to 20 units per acre. That's a pretty large swing to call as low-density. But we feel that 5.1 is well within that range. There's been no substantial changes since the preliminary plat, so we're just asking for you to approve the final plat tonight. Any questions?
Counselors, any questions for Kelly?
Thank you.
I do appreciate the, the... No, just a comment. Just, I appreciate the, all the details that you put into the Planning Commission summary page and covering all the issues that arose at first.
Thank you.
I do think that's really helpful. As we're going back and reviewing, I don't always catch the Planning Commission meeting. We try to go back if there's things that people are concerned about, but it is really helpful to kind of have those laid out.
Yep.
There were issues that were discussed with the Planning Commission comments around the condition of Payne Street and whether that was going to be, is that going to be rehabbed or brought up to...
It is, yeah. It's not necessarily a requirement for the project, since it's actually outside the development. But through the public meeting process, the owners have agreed to upgrade and bring that to city standard.
My other question is just around the emergency access street, or road, or whatever that is. Kind of in line with the presentation we just heard, one of the problems we have, I think, in our city and lots of cities with these kinds of developments is that they're very disconnected from everything else. And it makes it hard for people to get from one place to another. You're not going to go through this to get anywhere. This is just an island that you've got one way out and one way in. And, you know, this little access, why isn't that access street like another road to get it out?
So if you recall the shape of the property, it's kind of a panhandle shape. This area in green is where that access drive is. That was how the property was purchased. That wasn't an additional purchase. I don't know the history of why this 35-foot wide strip is part of the project. But 35 feet is not wide enough to put in a city street. It was wide enough, basically, so that we can connect utilities for the development. But due to the number of lots, we're required to have two emergency access drives. So we're using this, it's an existing gravel drive now. We will be improving the gravel drive so that it will handle emergency vehicles. But we are leaving it as gravel and basically just a utility easement.
Is it designed, I noticed that the street on the, I guess that's the north side, sort of dead ends on the west side of the property. I mean, is there a, is it possible, if development happens in some of the property around here, that this could be connected to a larger neighborhood?
Sure.
Is it planned that way?
Yes. There's been several talks, of course, since the blue area is right-of-way and it abuts several of the perimeter property lines at any point that can be extended. It has direct access to those neighboring properties. This was particularly wide at this location because during the neighborhood meeting, one of these owners over here really wanted access, direct access for their driveway. There is quite a bit of floodplain in this area, so it creates a buildable tract. They could use the rear of their property. And so it needed to be a little bit wider to accommodate that driveway. That's the odd shape.
Well, so it doesn't really pertain to this development necessarily, but from a policy perspective, I think we need to figure out a way to stop creating islands of neighborhoods and start connecting neighborhoods together so that we're not all just traveling to one little spot on one road and go back out to another one. So I'm hopeful this becomes part of a larger network. But, you know, more housing is a good thing for Stillwater, certainly. We need that. Do you have a sense of what the housing prices are going to be in this?
I do not. They'll be for sale, so anybody looking for that starter home-type lot size.
Anything further for Ms. Harris?
Thank you.
Counselors, further comments? I guess, do we have a, it's not really a recommendation on this one, is there? I guess there is. Lance, what does the Planning Commission recommend?
Let's see, the Planning Commission made a recommendation by a vote of three to zero to approve it. I'm sorry, three to one to approve it.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, further comments, questions, or motion on this item?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation and approve the final plat for Silverton Estates at 1600 East 16th Avenue. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final plat. Please vote. A vote of five to zero, that plat is approved. Item 8C, approve bid recommendations for expansion of the third floor of the municipal building for Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation offices, CC-20-30. Mr. Scott?
Good evening. Jim Scott, project manager. I'm sorry?
Were we built a park up there?
Yes. We could. Upstairs, third floor of the Police Department, Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation currently has offices on that floor. They've requested to expand their space. The additional space will include three agent offices, two evidence tech offices, an evidence processing room, and a secure evidence storage room. These plans were developed by Designers Inc. And this part of the expansion is part of the master plan for that third floor. We solicited bids for this project. Three bids were received. Our low bid was from Lambert Construction, and the timeline is estimated at 12 weeks. The Office of Management and Enterprise Services, which handles all the facility leases for the state of Oklahoma, has reviewed the bid, likes the bid, and has provided an attached payment chart for the repayment of the office expansion cost. The construction amount would be repaid in five years. And the lease amount equals $11.50 per square foot. Funds for this project are available in the City Capital Fund. And a budget amendment has been prepared and is attached for your all's approval with that, too. So our recommended action is approve the bid to Lambert Construction in the amount of $107,890. Authorize total project expenditures of $120,000, which includes a contingency for the project, and approve the budget amendment.
Thank you. Counselors, questions for Jim?
I'm curious, Jim, on the rate for the rental, is that a comparable rate for Stillwater office?
No. I'm not Jim, but, no.
Norman, is that comparable?
If I may. There is a law, and I'm trying to think of the acronym, but it's called SEGIS. And it restricts people that can occupy certain buildings that lease amount is probably five or six dollars a foot below what a Class A office space would be in Stillwater. But that is also space that generally could not be leased because there are very few people in this room that could go into that space unescorted because of federal regulations involving access. So...
Thank you.
So it's below market rate lease, but because there are specific restrictions on the use of the property?
That's correct. Yes.
And will OSB, do they sign a five-year lease on the property so that we're assured of getting our five years' worth of money back?
Yes.
Okay. How long has the, do we know how long the OSB has been up there so far?
I do not know that off the top of my head. Over 10 years. And I also emphasize, Jim mentioned that they're bringing five additional employees here, so they're doubling their staff.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Counselors, further discussion or motions on this item?
Motion to approve the bid recommendation for expansion of the third floor of the municipal building for Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation offices.
We have a motion and a second to approve this staff recommendation. Please vote. A vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Item 8D, quarterly financial report from Kristy Kluck.
Good evening. Kristy Kluck, Finance Director. And in your packet this evening are the financial reports for quarter two of fiscal year '20. And I am happy to report that revenues are on target when taken into account one-time payments that occur throughout the year as well as seasonal activity. Some of those seasonally-driven revenues also happen to be some of our largest revenue sources. And those include sales and use tax for the general fund as well as electric, water, and wastewater sales in the SUA. And because those are some of our largest revenue sources and they have the potential to fluctuate due to seasonal occurrences, we do monitor those very closely because those could impact us financially. But again, those revenues are on track to meet projections and possibly exceed those. It's still early in the year, so want to be careful there. We'll continue to monitor that, and we'll report back with quarter three reports. Our expenditures are also on target, again, when taken into account seasonal activities such as our purchase power costs and also more cyclical type of payments such as debt service and capital outlay. City staff continuously monitors the budget and evaluates our budget appropriations. And so through those processes, staff has identified four budget amendments that are on the agendas this evening for your consideration. And the first of those amendments, you'll actually see later this evening on the CETA agenda. But it is to correct what we are projecting to be a negative fund balance. And so like I said, you'll see that on the later agenda. The other three amendments are budget reductions in the City Capital Fund. We have three different projects that staff does not anticipate proceeding with at this time. And so by the council approving those amendments in the amount of $240,000, those funds will remain in the City Capital Fund for future deployment to meet other capital needs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counselors, any questions for Kristy?
Just out of curiosity, Kristy, so the three projects that you said are returning monies back to the capital funds, are those just on hold or are those canceled?
I think a combination of that. So one of those is a vehicle for the fire department, and I think that's been postponed. Another is a mower for Public Works, and they have found some other workarounds, as I've understood, to meet their needs. And then the third project is some improvements to the council room, and I think that is just on hold at this time.
Kristy, on the, well, first off, how long have you guys been doing this quarterly financial report?
This is the second time.
Yeah, not very long.
Yes, just for this fiscal year.
It's fantastic. I really appreciate it. In fact, I talked about it on the radio this morning. Because I think it really does align with our initiative to be more open, transparent, to give people more information on a more regular basis. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job in that regard. This is a lot of detail, but it's also fairly clear, even for those of us whose eyes glaze over a little bit when you get to financial reports. One question on the general fund financial summary, which is page three. It shows the percent year-to-date of amended budget used so far on the uses. They are all pretty close to in line with the 50-ish percent as they're halfway through the fiscal year, except for the transportation budget of $6.9 million, of which we spent 4% so far in this fiscal year. Could you help us understand?
Yes, and that's going to be due to capital. There are, and I believe it's for a couple of bridges. There's, and I wish Monty was here. I don't know if somebody else could step up and speak to this at all. But...
We just haven't done the project.
We just haven't done the project, so the dollars haven't gone out the door yet.
Thank you. Counselors, anything else? How's our revenue streams? Are looking okay? We're a little bit above where we project to be on sales tax and use tax, which is a big chunk of the revenue in here.
Yes.
The numbers this month and last month seem to be fairly good.
We are hanging in there.
It's a roller coaster ride, right? You don't know what next month's going to look like. All right. Well, thank you for being here. Appreciate the report. Do we need to make a motion on those budget amendments at this point?
Your notice isn't sufficient to make any budget amendments tonight.
That's what I thought. So we'll have those on a future agenda to make budget amendments?
The budget amendments are included in the packet?
But they're not included in the notice that was given to the public in the agenda. All you have is quarterly report.
Okay. All right.
We'll get it on the next one. Thank you. Item 8D, online project reporting update. Megan Purdue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Megan...
Megan Purdue, Communications Coordinator. Back on November 18th, I presented you with some web-based tools that marketing had developed to make information about the city's current projects more easily accessible to the public. Tonight, I'm here to report on updates and steps we've taken after considering the feedback that you provided us. I'll now navigate to stillwater.org's current project page. You requested that the GIS map be made more prominent, and we've placed that here on the landing page. Also, per your request, we've added a master list to display all capital projects and expenditures. It's here in the middle. There we go. Back on the landing page, we've also added a link to Finance's Quarterly Report, which holds updated information and project budgets, as you know. We've also added a page to Speak Up Stillwater. And this page serves as a place for the public to tell us how they'd like to see the city's current projects. So far, we have not received any feedback. However, we do have analytics showing that residents are viewing these pages, but it's possible there's just no questions or desired approaches to share on this yet. However, it's still open, and we are pushing it.
Find it difficult to believe, but there...
So our initiative to be more transparent is working. We're completely transparent.
Now, we recognize that not every city project has a webpage. Along the way, we've recognized and discussed some difficulties regarding the practicality of providing a project page for all projects and keeping them up to date with the time and current resources that we have available. Excuse me. Moving forward, we've identified two possible options. We could move forward with adding all projects to the site. Our assessment is that the resources needed could be significant, but we haven't identified that impact exactly. Another option is to request for council to identify a select list of projects to feature each year during budget preparation. City employees could then focus on keeping the public up to date on those identified projects, leaving the entire list on the quarterly report for citizens to find if they're more interested. We are open to any questions, direction, or input you may have, as always.
Councillors? Nothing? Can you pull it? Can we put the page right up?
Speak Up Stillwater?
No, just the landing page, that one there. I think, you know, the additions you guys have made, the improvements here, I mean, there's a lot. It's clear to get to. Once you get to this project page, you can see the map, you can see the list, you can see the money. I think that's, I think that's good work. In terms of like what projects need to be listed, I would think maybe a dollar amount. Certain projects that are budgeted at over X amount of dollars, maybe, and what we focus on having certain pages for, and then maybe the smaller ones just get a bulleted list of, you know, things that are happening. But we can probably review that a little bit closer. But I think this is really helpful. I think, you know, I try to tweet this out or put it on Facebook every once in a while to project pages, especially when people, you know, ask, hey, what's that project over there on Sixth Street, or what's going on in this thing? For the most part, there is a project page for it, and so we can point them to that. I would just encourage everybody who's out there listening or watching this to take advantage of these resources. They're well-done. There's a lot of information on these resources, and certainly this Speak Up Stillwater stuff, if you have questions or comments, that's a great place to put it. So we appreciate you guys' efforts.
Thank you. That might be a place, Mayor, that people who are looking for a project and can't find it could mention it on Speak Up Stillwater, and we might know projects that people are particularly interested in, for sure.
Question for that.
Okay.
What are you wondering about that you can't find, or something?
Okay.
I do think the threshold for some sort of, whether it's a monetary threshold or some other, right of visibility?
Visibility.
Seems appropriate as well. Seems reasonable to not have a project page necessarily for each one.
So how many projects are there in total?
I haven't counted that one. Because it is capital, some of them were just one-time purchases, and some projects were kind of a one-and-done sort of thing, from what I understand. And so that was another reason we also felt that there, an option could be just to identify projects.
Sure, yeah. I mean, that's sort of stuff we should just have a list or whatever that just, and here's all the capital projects. But ongoing, multi-week, multi-month kind of projects, you would think we'd have updates for. And there's a lot of transportation stuff on there. I think transportation is one of those things that we'd want to have as much detail as we can, even on the little stuff that happens. A pothole gets filled, or a full-depth repair happens in one little chunk, and stuff like that. We want people to know that those things are happening. Sometimes when you don't see the pothole on your street get filled for a while, you think none of the potholes are getting filled. But I know our people are out doing those jobs and helping people see where that's happening is a big part of what you guys are doing, so we appreciate that. Anything else, Council? Thanks, Megan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're down to item 9A. On first read, we have ordinance 3445, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 23 Land Development Code, Article 13, Overlay Districts, Division 3, Westwood Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District to amend Section 23-275, excuse me, 275.13, Off-Street Parking. This is the issue that we approved earlier in the evening. Councillors, any questions or motions on this ordinance?
Motion to move ordinance 3445 to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance this ordinance. Please vote. Vote five to zero. Ordinance 3445 is advanced to second reading. On second reading, we have ordinance 3448, an ordinance rezoning property addressed as 1798 North Payne Street from RT two-family residential district to RSS small lot, single-family residential district. Councillors, questions or motions on this item?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 3448.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Please vote. Vote five to zero. Ordinance 3448 is adopted. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Norman?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Mr. Nickle?
Two items. Thank you, Mayor. First, we had a winter storm last week, one of the few that we have here. And I wanted to compliment both the Stillwater Regional Airport employees and our Operations Department employees, who were working hard to ensure the safety and reliability of the streets and the runways. All our flights were on time and out of here. It's not the same with all Oklahoma airports.
There were a few people from Stillwater I saw that got stranded in Oklahoma City in this airplane.
That's right. So those folks were out at 4:00 AM Wednesday morning, already working, and pre-preparing bridges and scraping the streets, so, and obviously the runways. So we appreciate the work. Also, if you're looking to get involved more in your community, the City of Stillwater has upcoming vacancies on a variety of boards and committees, and is calling on community members to participate. Learn more and apply online to join a board or committee at stillwater.org/citizenboards. And there are quite a few listed, so we would appreciate you taking a look.
There are a lot of boards and committees that we have openings on, or that, there will be openings on at some point, right? These are, all those have terms, and they end, and somebody goes on. So even if you look at one and you don't see an opening right away, if you're interested in that topic, please put an application in, because when those terms expire, we will be looking for new folks potentially to come on and help. So don't just look at the ones that have a vacancy right now. Look at all the boards that you might be interested in. There's a lot of interesting stuff out there, from the Planning Commission to, we have the Airport Authority, we have even the Sister Cities Council that helps with that relationship. So there's a lot of interesting ways to get involved in the city, and the more people we have express interest, the more opportunity we have to get you involved. So please take a look at that. Mr. Norman, you had a note about the library and the census.
Yes, I got a letter from a gentleman last week, concerned that the library was actually going to be taking the census. And based on what I read there, I was somewhat concerned that maybe we weren't making it clear as what the library's actual role is with regard to the census. But the Stillwater Public Library as Census Central, which I think is the designation that they use, is only providing information about the census, answering questions about the census process, providing access to devices to complete the census, and providing mechanical assistance, or basically how to use the drop-down menus and things like that. But they're not the census takers. The census takers are employees of the Census Bureau, and they will be doing their job just as they have done for the last 200 and something years. So rest assured, the library is not taking the census.
They're not collecting that data?
No, sir.
Well, that's good. We certainly do appreciate what the library is doing there and facilitating the census process. But yeah, the census is taken by the Bureau, and the library will not be doing that. Thank you, John. Councillor Zanotti?
Yes. The city has just announced a date for the annual Stillwater Trash Off event. You're invited to participate on Saturday, March 28th, from 9:00 AM to noon. Help keep Stillwater beautiful while earning community service hours and free lunch in the meantime. Find more details and information on how to RSVP your group at stillwater.org/news.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Mayor?
And for the students who are interested in Boomer Lake Trail, that would be a good place to start for the trash off. The City of Stillwater recently celebrated newly promoted officers within the Stillwater Police Department, who were pinned on last Thursday, February 6th. The promoted officers include Kyle Bruce, who was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, and James Hanson, promoted to the rank of sergeant. Thanks for all of you and all that you do for the community.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councillor Wedlock?
Yes, sir. If you're considering installing a renewable energy source to help with electric costs and are also a City of Stillwater electric customer, consider speaking with the city's electric utility before signing any contracts. The city's electric utility department is happy to clarify policies and practices for those interested in installing renewable energy sources. If you would like more information on this, feel free to go to stillwater.org/news for more information on that.
Councillor Zlosky?
Yes. The city has full-time job openings in a variety of fields, including airport operations, wastewater treatment, mechanics, electric line working, police dispatching, and more. Go to stillwater.org/employment to see current job openings.
Thank you, Councillor Zlosky. We've talked a little bit tonight. We talked about this probably at every meeting, about infrastructure and road infrastructure. I think it's a good time to reiterate that we have appropriated over $25 million over the last couple of fiscal years for different transportation projects. As we talked about tonight in the financial report, some of that money is appropriated, but certainly hasn't been spent yet, so there are many projects that are still in the pipeline to be completed. But there's, even that money that we're spending now is not everything that needs to be covered, right? There's plenty more projects that need attention, and we need citizen feedback on the priorities and the funding options that we have for those projects. So there's several ways that you can provide feedback on transportation issues. Speakup.stillwater.org is a citizen engagement platform we discussed a little bit tonight. You can register and get involved to provide comments, ask questions. There's a page for the new Citizen Committee on Transportation there that, once they begin to meet. And if you'd also like to see results of what citizens have said about transportation and funding options, you can sign up for Flashboat and see the results of two different surveys that we've done there specifically on transportation. So you can go to flashboat.com to check that out and to participate in further surveys that we'll be doing. So again, from a transportation standpoint, we need to know what else you think we need to be doing, what this priority should be for our transportation options. We also are going to have to start talking about funding options, right? Because we have appropriated a lot of money, but a lot of that's one-time money. That's not recurring funds that we have coming in every year. And so if we want to continue to make significant progress on transportation improvements, we're going to have to talk about how we fund it. And your input is essential in figuring out where that money's going to come from. So I think that's it for announcements tonight. I don't think there's anything else on this agenda.
As far as announcements go, would this be a good time to announce that there's some legislation at the state legislature regarding ad valorem taxes?
That's, yeah. House Bill 1992 will be heard on the House floor this week. It will provide for the allowance of the city creating a public safety ad valorem district, which would allow for the city, doesn't create any tax, it just allows the citizens of Stillwater to vote on the option of using up to five mils of ad valorem tax to supplement our budget on specifically public safety, to spend on police and fire. It is, I think, a very important option to make available to citizens in cities in Oklahoma. Currently, we don't have the option to use ad valorem taxes for ongoing operational expenses like this. And so the state legislature voting to allow us to at least have the option as a city to consider these things is extremely important. So if you have a chance, and you send a note to your representative, Representative Ranson, Tally, and Ty Burns, who cover different parts of the city, please let them know that you'd like the opportunity to vote on an issue like this in Stillwater and support House Bill 1992. Thanks for reminding me about that, Senator John. Almost called you Senator Wedlock.
Close enough.
Way ahead of myself there. All right, is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city council meeting. Please vote. Vote five to zero. This meeting is adjourned. I will now move on to the utilities? The Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting for February 10, 2020 is now called the word. On this agenda, under general orders, we have item 3A, approved partnering with Oklahoma State University, the New Product Development Center, and an OCAS grant application for a production prototype of a downdraft gasifier, an authorized commitment of $200,000 for a cash match in fiscal year 2021. Mr. Knight, I cannot wait to hear you explain to me what...
This is going to be exciting. Sit back. Chris Knight, Waste Management Director. City staff was approached by OSU New Product Development Center approximately a month ago regarding a downdraft gasifier laboratory prototype that they have been working on. OSU staff is in the process of submitting an application for OCAS funding for the project. After reviewing the project with OSU and the Recycling Task Force Committee, city staff feels the project is a great opportunity for the Stillwater community. OSU has asked the City of Stillwater to partner on the project by committing $200,000 match in cash or in kind. Dr. Robert Taylor from OSU is here tonight with a presentation regarding the downdraft gasifier. Dr. Taylor will explain in detail the project and the funding they are applying for. Dr. Taylor will be available to answer any questions once he has done his presentation, and then, once he is finished, staff does have a recommendation.
Ready? We're on the edges of our seats.
Well, I also brought the bulk of the team that I'm about to introduce, so I may not have to answer all the questions. But thank you anyway for an opportunity to talk about collaboration between the city and the university to bring new technologies online. So let's move on down. Biosystems and Agriculture Engineering developed a downdraft gasifier. So this is a system that takes carbonaceous materials, burns it at controlled oxygen to get a syn gas out, a usable gas, out of the system. The New Product Development Center, I'm the director there, our goal is to help bring technologies out of the university. We actually serve an economic development mission, and one of the ways we do that is new products to the market. Cowboy Technologies, this is a foundation-based entity that specifically drives technologies out of the university into industry. Technology Development Center, that's where we get our patent work done. And then Proven Technologies is a student-owned startup that we put in place to commercialize this technology. Our objective is to take this technology, find the funding, and get our first production prototype online. We would like to do that with the City of Stillwater. So what we currently have in place, we have a full prototype in a laboratory at BAE, fully functional. Patent has been awarded for the system. The system has been tested and characterized for a number of different feedstocks. Most of these things, like switchgrass, red cedar, in your case, yard waste, is a premium material for feeding the system. Startup company has been established, so once we get everything solved, we hope to see units built here in Stillwater, people employed, and being sold all over the nation. And then the proposal for the commercialization, the bulk... The bulk of the proposal is now done. In fact, I'm down to about a two-week timetable to get that submitted to OCAS. What the gasifier is and how it works, so we have here a cartoon depiction of the system. So we take things like red cedar or switchgrass, we run these into the top of the system. In the reactor, we control the temperature of the reaction by controlling the oxygen that's in that environment. When we do that, we can get a burn that eliminates things like the nitrogen compounds that you get at high-temperature reactions. So we get a relatively clean syn gas out of the system. Also, the other thing that we do, that syn gas is then run through a scrubber to pull any additional TARS out. When we finish with that gas, the testing to date has shown that our output from an internal combustion engine running on our syn gas will meet California emission standards. So we've got a relatively clean burning system. For the material that you put in, right now, our system's designed for two and a half tons a day. 5,000 pounds in, you get 500 pounds of biochar back out. That's the charred material, which makes a premium soil amendment, so it's easy to get rid of. No hazards, no problems there. Here's a picture of the system that's in the Biosystems Laboratory at OSU. In fact, if, let me go back. Yeah. If you look at that picture, you'll see it's actually the exact same setup that's in the picture there. Now, the gasifier, which is the heart of the system, to use that gasifier for the city's yard waste problem, I need to start moving left. So left of the picture on the left there, you get a conveyor that's feeding the gasifier. Let's go one more step left. I've got a dryer. Your yard waste is probably anywhere from 30% to 50% water, depending on the time of the year. I have to have it at 15% before I can feed it to the gasifier. So I have to have a feedstock dryer. Another step left, I've got a storage bin. That storage bin is holding, in your case, ground yard waste. My guess is you're going to want that system to run at least three days, so I can fill it up sometime Friday, go home for the weekend, and not worry about it till Monday, because this system runs 24/7. You're getting 60 kilowatts of energy out of it all the time. And then, one step further to the left, I've got a grinder. So yard waste comes in on the trucks, we grind it, put it in the bin, dry it, hit the gasifier with it, get the gas out to a 100-kilowatt generator. Syn gas is about 60% as efficient as natural gas. So 100 kW natural gas generator will give me 60 kilowatts out, continuous power. By the way, you can ask questions anytime. You don't have to wait. All right. So let's look at the basic components. One of the questions you should ask me, if I'm looking for a research program, is where the risk? How are you risking my money? Here's the individual components. A feedstock grinder, those are commercially available items. We just have to buy the right one. It needs to be able to grind the diameter, the largest diameter of yard waste sticks that you're bringing in. It also needs to handle a reasonable feed rate. So a selection to be made, but relatively low risk. A ground feedstock holding bin, that, again, it's a commercial device. We have to integrate it into the system, but there's nothing related to the design there. The feedstock dryer, so my team's done a lot of looking. There's lots and lots of feedstock dryers on the market that generally start at about 10 tons a day and go up. We're only handling two and a half, so we really, that's a piece we're going to have to design and build. The good news is, it's mature technology, so there's relatively low risk in designing a small feedstock dryer for this system. The downdraft gasifier, so you've seen we have a prototype. There's several things we need to do to that. If you look at that, go back to the picture, you'll see that the reactor section's rusted. I really need to put some material on the inside, heat-resistant material on the inside to protect that metal. I also want to put the gasifier inside a shipping container. One, to make it easy to move. Two, if I put it inside a shipping container, I can put a fan in the bottom of the container, pull waste heat off the gasifier, and use that in my drying process. So waste heat will do the bulk of my drying. Right now, we have graduate students that control the system. We very well understand how to control it, but we need to do the controller programming so that PLC can do it, we can walk away. It runs 24/7. That's generally, I think, all of the pieces there. Electrical generator, commercially available. In fact, that might be something the city already has, I don't know. And then biochar storage, that's a roll-off container or dumpster. Again, the size of the container, if it's a 2,000, that'll hold 2,000 pounds of biochar, you change it out once every four days. So OCAS proposal season is open. Right now, the ORS proposals, there's 300,000 available. Now, we still have to win that proposal process as well. 300,000 available. Our Cowboy Technology Partners have put 100,000 on the table as part of the match. To get the rest of the full program, to get the grinder, the storage, the dryer, the gasifier, conveyors, and the generator all put together, we're looking at about a $600,000 program. So we're 200 short. A 200,000 match would let us get the other 200 from OCAS, assuming we win the proposal. There's other ways to do that. For instance, an in-kind match. If you had the 100 kW natural gas generator in-house that you wanted to commit to the program, we would value that and still be able to pull match from the program for that types of equipment. If you owned the grinder, we could value that and get the match from OCAS for it. So what we're asking, a full system, if we were to come in and take care of the yard waste problem, now, what this does for you, what it does for the city, right now, you pay a tipping fee on your yard waste. You bring it in, it has to go somewhere into the landfill, that goes to zero. Well, at least up to 900 tons a year. Two and a half tons a day times 365 days a year, the tipping fee on that goes to zero, and then we feed the electricity straight back into the grid. So 500 megawatt-hours a year back into the grid. I don't know, what does the city pay for electricity? Do we know? Anyway, you can multiply that out and figure out. If you're paying 10 cents, if you're paying 10 cents a kilowatt-hour, that's $50,000 a year off your electricity bill. But I have no idea what you're paying for electricity. We had also entertained with the recycling committee the option for a smaller system. If you brought us a dry waste stream, like paper or cardboard that was already dry, we could get, we could do away with that, the dryer, the grinding's a whole lot simpler, and a cheaper system to put in place, but it doesn't solve your yard waste problem, which is really the problem we wanted to tackle. These systems, this is a relatively straightforward application for the system, yard waste, being grass, leaves, and sticks. As we get these going, we get more and more of these on the ground, eventually, we'll even tackle the municipal waste problem. I didn't, I'm not saying we're going to do that today, but recognize there's a future for this, a future for Stillwater, a future for the system. Questions? Surely you have questions? I've got an hour's worth of questions from the recycling board. I know you have at least one.
I appreciate your clarifying about cardboard and paper, because that was the other thing I, that was the question I was going to ask, that is, for right now, it's predominantly for the yard waste, but there's a possibility for the cardboard or paper material to also be-
Right, right. So if we, for whatever reason, 200,000 was out of reach, could we look at something in the 50,000 to 75,000 range to just do cardboard and paper? And that assumes that it's already dry. So I can modify the proposal on the fly to do something like that. And we, our team will always work to get the other pieces done in another way, so that at some point in the future, we could come back to you and say, okay, we've got the dryer done, we could go ahead and tackle the yard waste problem.
So is it either/or then, it's either this, just for yard waste?
Oh, no. If you, if we do the 200,000, where we do the entire yard waste problem, any carbonaceous material now is fair game. In fact, the drier, the better, the easier this process.
Could you share with us a little bit what the timeline would be?
Yeah.
So you have the timeline for funding, and then-
I spent most of the weekend working on the proposal. I now have the timetable. We see this system coming online in 18 and 19 months. So that's us designing the pieces we need to design, getting them purchased, getting with the waste manager, figuring out where it goes, setting it up, and flipping the switch to go in about 18 months, well, back up, 18 months from the go date.
From funding.
If you assume I get my proposal in on March 2nd, and OCAS smiles on us, and we win, funding would start August 1st. So 18 months from August 1st, we hope to be processing your yard waste.
That was my other question, location. So the unit would be located on a, on city property?
Yes.
Yes. It would be located on city property, and we're kind of entertaining potentially putting it at the wastewater treatment plant. Haven't told him yet.
Chris, is that because we see, is there benefit to having a waste-to-energy project at the water treatment plant?
Well, we felt, one, and we're still investigating a little bit, but the ash that is, that comes from it, that potentially maybe using it at the wastewater treatment plant on the sludge beds that are out there potentially. And they have the room, and then we kind of saw that we could use the electricity potentially at the wastewater treatment plant to operate something they have out there.
Also, another piece that goes with that, that sludge that currently goes out on the ground, and watch behind me and see if the researchers cringe at all when I say this, but with a little research, we can probably take that, dry it, and also run it to the gas, through the gasifier. So that might be a solution to that problem as well.
So I wanted just to zoom out for just a second. I want to also let Council know, our recycling task force was very excited about this project and the prospect of partnering with OSU on this innovation. But I just wanted to zoom out for just a second, just to make sure that everybody understands. So the idea would be that we could take things that are currently going into our waste stream, whether they be our yard waste, potentially recyclables like cardboard and such, take them out of our waste stream and do a waste, basically waste-to-energy project. So we'd be using those things instead of them going to a landfill, instead of them going to a recycling processor, they would be going into this system, and we'd be getting energy out of them.
And I think if you look at the numbers, and I did this for Weyerhauser the other day, the tipping fees plus the returned energy on the electricity, and that's assuming, I get the number for what you pay for electricity, not what they'll pay you for electricity, vastly different numbers. These systems are probably three to four years' payback, so after that point in time, you're actually making money from the system. It's cost the city's not having to deal with anymore.
I think it really feeds in, I mean, this is a conversation we're having in our community right now. It's the reason why we have the recycling task force, is how do we make an impact when the recycling markets are down the way that they are? How do we leave a lighter footprint in terms of our waste streams? I think this all kind of goes into more of a comprehensive strategy for dealing with those things. I did have a question about scale. Chris, could you speak to a little bit? So I apologize, you can take how much material?
So right now, we're working at two and a half tons per day. We want to get this to market, so we're really eager to stay right there so that we've not created more problems for ourselves. At some point in the future, when we maybe understand the rest of the problem, it's possible that we could scale up significantly.
I just, I think it would be helpful to understand, kind of, do you, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Chris, but could, how much are we generating? So if we look at something like yard waste, can you just help us scale what the City of Stillwater is currently generating?
Yard waste, we collect between 1,200 and 1,400 tons a year. And then our recycling, we've been, oh, about 1,400 to 1,600 tons a year on, there were single stream from the curb, and then the recycling center, and then our commercial cardboard program.
Okay.
So to answer your question, then, this gasifier will do about 900 tons a year, so that's two-thirds, roughly speaking, of the yard's waste problem?
Yes. I think the other thing that's maybe important beyond scale for us to consider is the fact that our, and we do currently have somebody, a contract, somebody accepting our yard waste, but I actually, the timing of your system seems to coincide with the timing of that contract. Is that right, Chris?
Our current processor, the contract's up June 30th, 2022, so we felt the timing of when this would actually start was going to be pretty close, so we felt comfortable with that.
You said it would be 18 months from time of funding, so we're looking at the end of 2021, beginning of 2022?
From August 1 this year-
20.
At 18 months, and that's, that's when we see the system coming on, and we'll have six months of testing and analysis under program funding, and then we'll have to figure out how to work together after that on the system.
Our youngest recycling task force member, who's a freshman, she's a junior high, she, before I left the last recycling task force meeting, said, just, please, guys, vote on the gasifier, vote on the gasifier. She's very, very excited about the innovation and the technology of this prospect.
I'm very excited about it, too. What does the city get for $200,000?
The city gets the whole system. It'll probably be the cheapest system we ever sell.
What is the anticipated retail price of a system like this?
So that's really put me on the spot, but I'm guessing we're at 310, 320? Just, and I won't know the answer to that until we finish your program, but that's my rough guess.
So assuming this gets funded, and the city's able to come up with the 200 in cash from match, two years from now, we have a gasifier that's running 900 pounds of yard waste through it a year, 900 tons of yard waste through it a year. And that's, that's sort of the end of the relationship.
Well, not really. I mean, so we have our student company owner here. You might put him on the spot, asking if he's going to keep the company right here in Stillwater. So that, the idea that the company's here in Stillwater, there will always be a relationship.
Are you going to sign a contract that says that for 200,000? What does Cowboy Technologies get for their $100,000?
So they own a piece of the company.
They own a piece?
Yeah, that's the way it works. University technologies come out, and a royalty stream goes back in. So again, keeping it all in the community, right? We're incented to be the local part of our mission.
And just, I know this is kind of another 50,000-foot view question, but you had spoken to the point that right now, we're looking at kind of bio, biofuels or bio-waste to put into here. What does the project look like to, I don't know what the term would be, but to retrofit that to start taking other sources?
Okay. So some of that work's already been done. Dr. Ray Hunky and his team, they've run up to, and please feel free to correct me, too, but 40% municipal solid waste, and that operates reasonably well. We've got work to do on the gas cleaner. Right now, when I'm running just sticks and leaves, I know what's coming out. When I've got a little less control over what's going in, I have to worry a little bit more about my outgassing products. So there's just, there's some research to be done to-
But all of the hardware is already in place for that to happen?
Yes.
It's just an algorithm of how much oxygen we put into this for control-
Yeah. How we feed it and how we clean it is probably the two issues that will come to play there.
Okay, so just to, it's been a while since I was an engineering major, a long, long time ago. This thing is going to burn the waste, it's going to off, it's going to put out gas that then goes into an internal combustion engine and burns-
Yeah.
And runs a generator.
Correct.
And the exhaust from that internal combustion engine, you said, meets California emission standards.
To date, that's what our tests have shown us, and it's important to us that that be true. So on your system, we will be testing to make sure we made it.
And that's the only CO2 or other exhaust that's being emitted by this?
So all, yes, yes. All of the combustion projects, products from an internal combustion engine will be there, but we've managed to minimize them to reasonable levels.
And it's just running through a, like you said, just a standard engine?
Yeah, yeah. It's a natural gas, you know- It's just, it's a natural gas, you know, hogan or whoever's generator we buy.
Cool.
Good.
I just have to say that, Dash, if you're watching, today is the day that I finally am excited about a science project.
All right.
So I, wow, yeah, I, seriously.
Thank you.
Very, very, very impressive.
Thank you.
We appreciate the presentation and the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Where's the money come from, Chris?
We don't know yet, but finance is aware of the potential of this project. It hasn't been identified yet.
I would say that this is something I would like to see moved to the top of the pile as far as what we want to see done.
So the regulation actually at this point would just be to move forward with attempting to figure that part out, to approve partnering with OSU?
Where, yeah, staff is recommending to approve partnering, partnering with OSU and to authorize commitment of 200,000 dollars as a cash match in fiscal year 2021.
Do you all need that for your OCAST application?
By Wednesday.
Yeah.
They, they got to have a commitment from us by Wednesday so they can get that turned in. Now, if they don't, don't get the funding, we don't lose any money.
Can we make a commitment like that for a future fiscal year?
Well, it's trust, and so technically, you're not on a fiscal year calendar, but, you know, you're basically committing 200,000 dollars, and you don't have a contract that actually lays out the terms that you just heard.
Certainly, we could, in, in the meantime, I mean, the commitment of the money is one thing, the actual writing of the check is, is down the road, so certainly in the meantime, we could come up with an MOU.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a, I mean, saying right now, yes, we'll get you the money if you win your project and, and OCAST, you know, approves the funding, I mean, but that's not going to happen until August 1st of 2020, correct? Is when we'd actually have to start writing a check?
Right.
So I mean, between now and then, there's really not a whole lot of legal binding, legal, I mean, what happens if we say we're going to get you the money, you win the project, and then for some reason the city says, we're not writing your check?
So if that happens, and we go back to OCAST and say?
You lost your match.
And well, it's what I was going to say, is next year offline department will come through. But that, that's a risk we're willing to.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that, that, I guess is the, the only real issue here is that there's not a whole lot we can, I mean, other than saying we're committed to finding that money in the future.
Is that all you require? I mean, do you require any for your?
Just, just a letter to OCAST, which Chris already has, that says, indeed, the City of Stillwater's on board, we're excited, here's what we're paying for, let's go. And if, if it can't happen, it can't happen, it's okay.
It's okay. How do you feel about that, Mr. City Attorney?
I haven't seen the letter, so.
But they, so they're generally saying, I mean, for a grant application, you have to show that you have leverage dollars or partner dollars or in-match, right? But they're not requiring like a, a contract as a part of that grant application?
Yeah, definitely. Until, until we begin to enter the contract with OCAST, at that point in time, they'd well want the city to come forward and say, there's the capital group that needs to join, and that's in August.
Can we make a work?
So a motion that says something like authorizing, Chris, to indicate the SUA's
willingness to participate should this, this funding become available?
Is that acceptable for you guys? A duh for your?
And hash out the contract details after?
Later, later down the line.
I would like to make a motion.
What, what was that one?
I'm trying to think where.
You said be a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that to authorize staff to provide a letter of support indicating our willingness to participate. Stop me anytime, John, if I'm going off the rails. Our willingness to participate as a matching partner in the OCAST application for the gas fire system.
Up to 200,000?
I'm sorry, up to, for 200,000 dollars.
I will second that one.
All right, we have a motion and a second to authorize the staff to indicate the city's willingness, or the SUA's willingness to participate in this grant. Please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that authorization is approved.
Thanks.
This is exciting, it really is. You know, like we said with the students earlier, it's fantastic that we have these kinds of resources available at the university, and you guys doing work that we don't all understand, but we're excited to see the results of.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
And really excited to see that be based in Stillwater.
Yes, come see me when you get ready. I think we can work something out. I really have, I hopes that this has a big return.
All right, item 3B on the SUA agenda, authorize 47,500 dollars, including contingency for procurement of chlorine feed replacement equipment and materials at the water treatment plant, and approve the associated budget amendment. This is SUA 20,04. Mr. Driscoll?
Good evening, James Driscoll, I'm the Water Utilities Director. Here tonight to request funding to replace some of our components in our chlorine feed system at the water, or water treatment plant, which is located on Yost at Highway 177. Some of the background and issues, of course, chlorine gas is utilized in our treatment as a disinfectant. Our system is a, utilizes chloramines, so we add ammonia downstream to create those. Some of the issues with our current system is the equipment, it's in poor working order, requires frequent repairs, some of the parts are no longer available due to manufacturer discontinuation, and it's becoming very labor-intensive to keep the existing system going. This slide shows a few pictures of some of the equipment, some of the control units, and one of the chlorine feeders. I point that out because most things in our water system are redundant, so there's two parallel systems. That way, we can perform maintenance if we have issues, we can always switch to the second system. A lot of the equipment's 20 years old, and when you pair that with the fact that it is in operation 24/7, it gets a lot of wear. Again, this is some more of the system, some of the plumbing. At the bottom, you can see two vacuum regulators. They basically take that chlorine gas from a 2,000 PSI pressure point and bring it down to a neutral or even a vacuum level. And if this is approved, some of our plans is to, to move these regulators closer to the source, which would reduce some of our high-pressure plumbing, makes the system a little safer. At the top, you can see a switchover valve, and if you, you can kind of note there, the multiple lines coming in and a single line going out, that, that kind of shows that redundancy in the system. So some of the proposed work, we're proposing to replace switchover valves, vacuum regulators, and chlorine feeders. Some of the other equipment, we don't know yet until we start replacing, whether it'll be needed or not, so those are unsure. Some of the equip, or the equipment will all be replaced by city staff, and we'll reach out for additional outside help if needed. We don't anticipate that. All the work will be done, of course, since it's a redundant system, with the system in operation, have some minor shutdowns for those components, like that switchover valve where the two come together, but it'll be minor. So budget and funding, we're requesting authorization for 47,500, which does include a 25% contingency. The reason for that high contingency is those unknowns I discussed in that last slide. The funding, funding will be appropriated from the Water Capital Fund. And down to recommendation, staff, staff recommends authorization of funds for procurement of chlorine feed replacement equipment and materials for 47,500, which includes contingency and approval budget amendment to appropriate the funds. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer them.
Thank you, James. Trustees, any questions?
Just curious, James, does any of this equipment that we're talking about needing replacing have anything to do with the chloramine problem we had three years ago?
No, it does not.
Okay, so this is a.
That was a. That was a pneumonia issue. This is the chlorine side.
But I assume waiting for this to fail would also be a problem.
This is to avoid a recurrence of that issue.
That sounds like a bad idea.
Yeah. Motion to authorize 47,500 dollars, including contingency for procurement of chlorine feed replacement equipment, take a breath there, and materials, and approve the associated budget amendment. Second.
With a motion and a second to approve this project and the associated budget amendment, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thanks, James. Nothing else on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, SUA is now adjourned. With a vote of five to zero, SUA is now adjourned. I will now call to order the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting for February 10/22. On this agenda, we have a consent document to approve the budget amendment to reduce appropriations at the CETA operating fund by 78,72 dollars. We discussed this in the council presentation. Any questions at this point, trustees on this item, or is there a motion with the consent document?
Motion to approve the consent document.
Second.
With a motion and a second, please vote. With a vote of five to zero, the CETA consent document is approved. On item 5, we do have a visit to Stillwater Semiannual Report. We've received a request to postpone that report, to postpone that report to our March 2nd meeting, which we're happy to do so that those folks can join us for that meeting. I don't think we need a motion to that.
No.
So come back and join us on March 2nd for the Semiannual Visit to Stillwater Report. With nothing else on the CETA agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
With a motion and a second to adjourn CETA, please vote. Vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Economic Development Authority meeting is now adjourned. Thanks for being here.